Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Stickley?
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Present.
Counselor Stieritz?
Here.
And Counselor Frye?
Here.
We have five members present. We have a quorum.
Counsel has had time to go over the prior meeting's minutes. Do we have a movement on that, please?
I would make a motion to accept the minutes as printed. I'll second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a couple of committee reports. We're going to start with the -- well, we had nobody wanting to address counsel as of today, so we'll move on to our street committee report.
Street?
Yeah, you. Okay.
I am, because Jeff's gone.
Thank you. Sorry.
So, that's okay. Street Committee met on Monday, September 9th. Members present were Jeff Stieritz, the Chair, and Scott Spears. Rick Frye was absent. And then Keith Tarbet, Mayor Unner, and Andrea Gergen were there. We were talking about the South Shoup Avenue, the second stage of repaving. ODOT was going to repave it. And they're -- and the portion of the project, they're requesting the city make the sidewalks ADA compliant in that area. Keith said Chestnut and Cherry at Shoup are already compliant, but the Leggett, Superior, and Delway are not. He said he would like to have the sidewalks included in the initial planning to save money on engineering. I moved and was seconded by Counsel President Stieritz to approve, including the engineering for the ADA compliant sidewalks. No dot. South Shoup Avenue repaving plans.
We have a motion to make.
I'll make that motion to accept the recommendation.
I'll second the idea.
Motion to accept the Street Committee recommendation to include ADA sidewalk compliance engineering in the South Shoup Avenue repaving plans, moved by Counselor Frye and seconded by Counselor Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
And Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's. Motion carries.
Okay, next we have...
I did miss something, though. I'm sorry.
What'd you miss?
The street restriping.
Oh, that was discussed, yes.
Yeah.
We need to go back and -- he's got to finish out his report. We just...
Sorry about that. I guess I didn't --
We can just vote...
I forgot we did that.
On two different actions in your committee.
There was no action taken, but just that Keith said that would be the restripe would be the seven-point miles, seven-point-five miles of street would be about $6,000.
Okay.
He's trying to put that in the budget for next year.
Right.
But there were no actions taken.
All righty, good.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay. Tree Commission.
Tree Commission, September 11th. Tree Report by Larry Frye was basically nothing to report, but he requested that him and I go out and do an assessment on the park trees and see what kind of trees that he thought that myself and him should be removed this coming winter. Pete Carr had given us a whole list of things about the Indian Hill Project that are coming up. On October 2nd, Worthington Industries is going to have 23 volunteers there. They're going to be putting and selling some benches and planting some trees and myself and a couple other possible employees from the city may be there to kind of assist on that. One other thing, Pete had contacted the golf course to see if we could use the course's tree space to spade a few trees in that area. We have done put one tree in, still waiting for an oops to make sure that the place we're picking the trees up aren't -- we're not going to run into any wire, underground wires or anything like that. I know, Tom, you may have more to talk about that Indian Hill Project. We did briefly talk about a little bit of the hosting the Tree City USA in 2021, and Jim Spees thought it would be a good idea, yep, to contact the newspaper to talk about this Oklahoma tree that we are presently growing and what we're going to be doing with it at a later date. No recommendations.
So, we need a motion to accept the Tree Commission?
No, there's no action recommendation, I think.
Oh, okay. So, we don't accept anything else? There's a lot on it. Okay. I do have a question before we move forward on this. Tree Commission, you're starting to talk about the 2021 hosting and things. Would this be something that you're going to start needing to get in contact with?
The budget for, yeah.
Yeah, for next year, but yet also have you figured out a place and things like that?
Yeah, we have discussed it to some degree. The last time we hosted it, we had it at the Cafeteria.
Yes.
It seemed to work out really well.
It did. That was a nice place.
We haven't made any decisions or anything like that. I know as the date gets closer, Stephanie Miller will probably give us some guidelines on what kind of budget money we need to have and that kind of thing.
That was a lot of people at the one that we hosted, but then I've been to some that not near as many, so maybe we could get a last three years.
Sometimes if they're on the further point of a lot of travel and stuff like that, there's -- they aren't.
No, it's good to go.
But there are some places like Toledo, they had it at the zoo one time.
Yeah.
I unfortunately had to miss that one, but there was -- they had a really good crowd for that one.
All right, good. Okay, let's move forward then with our department heads. We'll start with -- you're not Rick Sluter.
Nope. September's been a busy month with inspections. Started school. I've been out inspecting the buildings. Today Captain Fisher, Assistant Chief Sherky, spent the day with the teachers on an in-service going over emergency pre-plan responses and reunification points, which leads us into October, which is fire prevention month. They've been working on getting the PR organized for the whole month for that. That's a pretty busy month in the fire department. And other than a couple of large fires over the past 30 days, everything's going really well.
Is they, the fire department, do we still hand out with the school children the smoke alarms or the carbon monoxide?
They work with the Red Cross, and instead of handing individual detectors out to each one, they give a coupon. And they make contact with the Red Cross representatives. Go out, the fire department goes out, and they install it in the house up there.
Very nice. Okay. Any questions for Phil?
About two weeks ago, a major fire, right?
Major fire, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, how'd you feel? Our department performed through that?
Excellent. Excellent. It's always one thing to have a big fire, but when you pull 70-plus departments together and coordinate and work together, it's pretty amazing feat on everybody's part there.
I bet.
And they were up last night with...
And nobody was injured or nothing?
Some minor, some minor issues, nothing, nothing serious.
That's good.
Equipment worked great. The township worked great the next day, coming in, changing filters and stuff like that, keeping things moving for us, so.
I know both Mayor Miller and you have gotten calls from the administrator over there that they were so appreciative for everybody in the county and their aid and assist and also for cities' use of water when they opened up the line. And that was really nice to be able to have that available as a water aid. So, very good.
So, was there a time that we were pulling water that to fight that from the mummy? I don't know any of the specifics.
It was probably from our treatment plant.
Yeah, it was, we had enough water in the ponds.
We got a 12-inch mangol from Wasean.
Because there's a little building on the edge there.
Yeah, that's where, that's where.
The turn off or turn on is, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it was opened at.
And we had a lot in our reservoirs that they said they didn't have to pull from the Napoleon, correct? That's a good thing.
Took a while to clean the equipment up, right?
Yeah. There's still, every day they go out and work on a little piece of area of the apparatus. They came back black. They were white fire trucks. They came back black. We're back to white again, so.
Hard to get it off, they said, too.
Yeah, they did a lot of scrubbing, a lot of hands-on scrubbing.
Little men on the totem pole get that job, I bet.
No, everybody pitched in. It was all hands on deck, yep.
Chief Sluter?
Yep, he was doing his part.
Good job, well done.
His truck.
His truck.
All right, Keith?
Along with the teacher in service, along with the fire department, we had some people there speaking today as well. Assistant Chief Ruff and I went. We kind of, along the safety lines, we talked a little bit about how we would respond to certain types of calls at the school. Got into a little bit of that. We also provided demonstrations of firing off blank firearm rounds in school, so they could hear how it would sound coming from different areas of the school. So, that was, that was pretty cool. Teachers seemed to really respond to that. We didn't get any negative feedback about firing off blank rounds in the school, but they were, they were kind of interested to hear, you know, some of them. I know one of the, one of the comments we heard was, it kind of sounded like just as loud as a door slamming when we were on the other side of the school. So, just kind of, you know, opening their eyes to the kind of stuff that, you know, they might not know exactly what's going on right when that first happens. We are planning on doing an Alice refresher with our school resource officer, John Borcher, in the October Teacher in Service Day, so. October 4th, we're having Coffee with a Cop event at McDonald's. McDonald's contact will be from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. McDonald's had contacted us about their national, I guess it's a national Coffee with a Cop through their chain, so they reached out to us. So, we will be doing that October 4th from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m.
There's always a good group of men out there in the morning who have questions. That's good.
So, and McDonald's was offering a free, free small cafe to anybody that wanted to come out and just chat with police officers about, you know, any issues, no agendas or anything like that. Just come out, have a coffee, and shoot the breeze with us and answer any questions or anything they might have. Tom will speak a little bit on ordinance 2019-6, issue with our under-speed utility and low-speed vehicle legislation, that kind of a issue we've come up. I'll be, I will answer any questions as Tom kind of dives into that. And then the last thing I have, about a week and a half ago, I was contacted by a person by the name of Mark Thomas and his fiancee Kendra Harp. They are antique collectors, and they actually came across one of probably the first pieces of really of Wasean history that is kind of on record that we could find, that he was able to, he contacted me, I was able to purchase it. What he had found in an estate sale is actually a city marshal badge for the city of Wasean. I'll have this up here for after, after council if anybody wants to check that out. From the research we've been able to do, I called in Bob Crumb to kind of help me out as well, and from my own personal research and his, we're finding this was sometime between probably 1857 was the first mention of any marshal in the city of Wasean, and around 1871, 1870, 1871, they had the marshal resign and then they established a police force, and they actually called him the police chief. So, this is somewhere between 1857 and 1851 is when that badge would have been used, so.
Needs a better box.
Yeah. Yeah, we're definitely going to get a nicer display, and once we're able to trace a little bit more history on it, he was able to find a few names of some of the older marshals from some of the Wasean council records and different things like that. So, he's going to type something up once he's be able to research a little bit more. But I did want to give a thank you to Mr. Thomas and Mrs. Harp to reach out and be able to, you know, contact us and be able to bring this back to Wasean and make sure it stays, stays here. So, that was very cool.
Very cool. A little bit of history. Any questions for Chief?
Yeah, last council meeting, we moved Ruff up to Assistant Chief, and you had commented that we are looking now for Lieutenant and Sergeant?
Yes.
Why the one caused the two?
Well, when, when Ruff moved up from Lieutenant to Assistant Chief, that opened the lieutenant spot. The only people eligible to take the lieutenant spot are two sergeants, so one of them has to move up, and then that would create the sergeant position.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Keith?
A couple of updates. The BioSolids project out at the water reclamation plant is completely finished now. We paid off the final payment on it. They're about a little over $50,000 under budget on that project, and it is working out nicely, especially this year. Thank God we did not have to find places to put all that sludge at, because with this much rain, we would have never had enough fields to do it. So, now it's being compacted and hauled away. Just an update on the building and on the streets committee. I was able to find money in the budget for the street restriping, so that will hopefully be taken care of this year. Can't guarantee I'm going to get all the streets, because we have to see which ones actually need done, but we're hoping to get a good chunk of them done. Also, the tree damaged sidewalks, we are going to get a portion of those completed this year. Tom Mica from Mica Construction gave us a proposal. He's going to be able to get a few of them done. We're running out of time, so we're going to shoot for the three largest areas where we can get the most bang for our buck, and then he's going to come back in April or May and finish the ones up that we have on our list, plus any more that we can figure out where they're at at that time. As of September 8th, the pool officially closed. I'm hoping to have a rundown for you next council meeting as far as where we set on that. The mayor and I met with Tom Burkholder to go over a punch list of a few items he'd like to have replaced. I've already talked with John Harps. We went out Friday and walked around to go over his list to see where everything was at, what could be taken care of by Public Works, and what we may need to call in extra help on to take care of. I think that's about it. Unless anyone has any questions.
Just a couple things. The Leggett Street sidewalk cleanup, I don't know if you dispatched some folks to work along that. It looked really nice.
Yeah, I guess so. And it keeps raining, and then it keeps running down.
Yeah, I know. But it looks a lot better. It's been nice. And another thing that I wanted to -- oh, come to me later, maybe. Sorry. Thank you.
All right, and Jamie was not able to be here tonight. It's senior night for her daughter, so she's there, so we'll move on with that.
Okay, so Chief Chittin referenced ordinance 2019-5, which is an amendment to our slow, what we've called our slow-moving vehicle ordinance. And essentially what we're doing is just adding another subsection which permits the police department to revisit inspections in the event that becomes appropriate. There are, could be situations, we think, where folks will work extra hard to reconfigure their vehicle for purposes of gaining a certificate and then undoing that afterwards, having obtained. And so, we want to provide some flexibility for that, and also situations where there may have been a mistake or, I mean, some of the definitions, the definitions for the vehicles can be somewhat, I mean, our ordinance tracks the state definitions. We don't really have much of a choice to use those, but they can be difficult to apply and interpret in certain situations. And so, we wanted to provide them also some flexibility in the event it was determined that the vehicle, a vehicle that was registered really is not a legitimate, one of the four categories: utility vehicle, slow-moving vehicle, mini truck, and I forget the fourth, fourth one.
Under speed.
Under speed vehicle, yeah. So, that's all that does. It just adds a separate subsection to that, to that section. I guess, in terms of system, other things, I guess I can mention, by way of an update, I continue to assist the committee that's working on the handbook, the update to the city's, they wouldn't call it an update. I would say it's a recasting of the policies and procedures manual to bring it into current, current day requirements. We're on our last meeting, I think, to go over revisions, and I think we probably should have that wrapped up in a few weeks. So, we may, it's going to be a great thing for the city. We spent a lot of time on it, thinking about it in detail, and I'm sure we'll have to tweak it as we go on here and there. We find some things that may need to be addressed, but we will get that hopefully to the appropriate council committee within, I don't know, the next two or four weeks, I would think, at the latest. So, just want to let counsel know we're still, we're still working on that. And I am reviewing a lease for the cemetery. Shane, I apologize to board for that oversight. I'm halfway through the 33 pages, so we'll, we'll get the rest done tomorrow, hopefully, and get back to you guys on that. I apologize for the delay in that. And then finally, just to follow up on Rick's comments on the project out there for the corridor, I'll tell you what. So, we were going to the Rotary Club in conjunction with the Tree Commission, in conjunction with the cross-country folks have been working hard out there. Just to remind counsel, the development of that corridor has expanded substantially to try to make it into something more than just a cow path between the two woods. It's approximately now three acres, another 160 feet wide, I think. And the first stage was for the land formation guys to reconfigure the dirt out there and create some contour and redo the paths. So, now that there's two paths, there's going to be two paths, one going on the western side of the property and one on the eastern side of the corridor. So, you now no longer have to go down the same path and crisscross. And for the races now, they'll have a path in and a path out, which is going to be really nice for the cross-country folks. But the land guys are now done with that, and if you haven't been back there and you have a free moment, I recommend you go back and look at the, it's really cool. Put in a hill, rerouted the one path, so now it goes through some trees, took out a lot of the scrub stuff that was along the west side. The folks have been working with the neighboring landowners there to do something that's satisfactory to them. And now, so that's done. The land formation is done, and then on October 2nd, the Tree Commission and Worthington Steel Volunteers are going to be putting in benches and planting about 40 trees out there. I understand the seed grass stuff has been planted, so that will be coming up after a bit. It's still a little rough out there, I mean, just like any project, but it's going to be really cool. This past weekend, the cross-country team was out there cleaning up the paths, getting ready for the race, the Fulton County Invitational Race, which will be held out there this Saturday, which is kind of a big deal. That'll be Saturday morning, three or four races between the girls and guys in junior high and high school. And they were cleaning up the path, getting rid of some of the nuts. And then this week, finally, Paul, Andre, and Ed and Officer will be out there just cleaning up some ruts on the south side of the woods to make sure that the, you know, it's suitable for the runners. So, lot going on out there. October 2nd, 8:00, Rotary is actually having their lunch, their usual Wednesday lunch out at the pavilion. And we're going to be having the Tree Commission and the Worthington Steel folks there for lunch, so I'd invite, you know, if you guys could make it, to come on out. I'm sure I'd be happy to sponsor you for lunch if you're not a, or Harold would.
I was just going to say Harold can...
Yeah, Harold would. Yeah, or the mayor.
There you go.
And certainly want to invite the press to come on out. It's our honored guest. If you guys want to come out and cover that, we'd love to have you out there. It's just going to be a great, a great day.
I know some of the residents were wondering what they're developing out there when you guys moved that up and the grade and stuff. Are they building out there? And I said, no, I, that's truly, nobody's put, going to build anything. It's actually part of the project. So, that answered a lot of the questions that some of the residents have, because it does look like they're developing out there.
Yeah, I know it does. Yeah, big hill out there now. I do, finally, I want to say thanks to the beautification team also. I don't think they get the recognition that they deserve for the work they're doing around the city. When I had my leg braced, I had to walk back and forth from home to work every day, two or three times, and every day I passed that, that little patch of landscaping by the, by the railroad there, and I really appreciated the, what they did, and just redid it for the fall with the, with the mums and the pumpkins, so. Appreciate what they're, what you guys are doing for that. I drove through Saturday morning once. I saw him busy at work, doing some watering. I just thought to myself, there has to be an easier way than making all those trips to the one water source to...
They're thinking.
If you could help us, yeah, we're looking.
We need an entry.
I drive through Del, and I see the flower guy with his golf cart and he had the water on the back, and...
I saw him there Sunday.
So, I don't know. There has to be something easier for you guys. I felt for you.
If anyone has an old golf cart, they'd like to donate to this committee. That would be great.
We do appreciate it. It really does. It does make a big difference.
We love doing it. We really do.
Thank you.
It's a lot of fun.
Tom, about the buffer between the residence and the paths? Yeah. The buffer's gone now. I mean, is that, is that correct? In certain spots. There's still some trees. And again, in those areas where it is a bit naked, that was, there was a discussion with, my understanding, I didn't have it directed myself, but Paul and Ed, I understand, actually talked to the folks, and it was their preference to have it removed. And I think there's probably, I don't know for sure, but I think there's probably some plans to replant some trees there to try to, you know, make that look... Oh, we're thinking that those residents were engaged a little bit?
Yes. And behind two of the properties, there's...
I agree.
We're spading in six blue spruce, and then there's, like, like you had said, there's like 40 trees that are going to be planted that day on top of that, and some of them will be in that area.
There are some people that may have liked that look.
They did. They liked that look.
Yeah, well, we definitely wanted to be, we wanted to be considerate of that. And if you happen to have, if there's some comments that you hear that there's some concerns, please feel free to...
The only concern I heard was, are they developing, are they putting a house, what are they doing there? And I'm like, no, on his part, but I agree. If they're going to be putting more trees up, it'll be nice. It's just a change of scenery in the backyard.
I remember a resident came to us when we put in the, well, the new high school track at Sackerfield, and they wanted the buffer. I won't name the name of the resident, but then later he's like, gosh, I wish the buffer wasn't there so I could see what was going on. So...
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Tom? Okay. Well, let's move on with legislation. Our first reading of legislation is ordinance 2019-6, an ordinance to amend Section 377 of the codified ordinance of the city of Wasean.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance 2019-6 on first reading, moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Stieritz. Sorry, discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
And Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's. Motion carries.
Second reading, ordinance 2019-5, an ordinance amended Section 1314.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wasean.
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2019-5 on second reading, moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Is there any discussion?
Could you just give me a refresher real quick? I'm just, do we remember what we're...
It's the grass.
Do you want me to say it, or you want them to say it? We're adding, we're just clarifying in the statute that if the city desires to take some other legal, pursue some other legal remedy besides certifying a grass mowing expense to the tax duplicate, that we could do something else. That's jarred my memory. Thank you. Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five a's, zero n's. Motion carries.
We have nothing under third reading. I have a couple things for, under new business. The Chamber of Commerce wanted to remind everyone that they want to do the appreciation lunch on 27th of September at 11:30 at the chamber. They think are doing brats this year and some other foods, but they like to show their appreciation to downtown and our businesses in Wasean and anyone else who has anything to do with helping this city, promote this city. They are very grateful for, and they get out and they grow. So, they want to extend that invitation to all of you on that. Out front, the bushes will be coming this week. I don't think they're here yet, so once that's done, the beautification team will be out front putting those in and a new tree. So, yeah, maybe they'll be out there when you guys walk out. I don't know. Did you bring a shovel?
We'll see.
Yeah. So, it'll be exciting to see that finish, but I do want to thank Public Works for taking out the other ones that were up front by the building. Let's see.
What time is it, Mayor? We're here for the chamber.
11:30.
11:30.
The chili festival was, I feel, a huge success. The weather was a little warm for chili, but the people always support it. They come out, and we had 13 vendors this year, which is, I think, five or six up from last year. And we also had quite a few crafters. Linda does an amazing job with getting those in, and when I go around and talk to them, they're always like, yeah, I'm coming back. It's just, it's, it's short, but it's a good time, and it's just a, it's one of those family festivals downtown that if you can get away, it's a busy time on Saturday mornings. But we may just have to look at a different date, try to get a little cooler. And we had some superheroes...
And, um, we had some superheroes down there this year that we weren't expecting, that the kids absolutely loved. And, um, I have to say that our firemen get the bragging rights this year for the chili. The police department went down. But the representation was great and thank you again for taking the time to come up and do that. That's always a fun time. So I heard somebody got into your chili on third shift.
Yeah. They ate half of our one's roaster before we got up there.
They had to tweak it. I thought that was funny. So anyways, um.
Was it the fire department?
It was Blaze.
Any more, uh, new business discussion?
Let the dog in.
That was the kids from your church, wasn't it, that, that came to the chili that went wrong?
Yeah.
That was very good of you guys to do that. Thank you very much.
Another shout out is to Mark Brittenhouse. Every year he volunteers his time in that, in that little, um, train that he does and the kids just love that. And that's something that you don't see at a lot of others events and to see that downtown every, every time, he just, no fails and he volunteers his time for that, so.
He did a great job also.
Yeah, he was good. Yeah.
There was a lot of people down there.
It does.
Maybe we just can pass a resolution for sixty degrees on chili cook-off days, you know?
On emergency.
And put Shane Chamberlain's charge to make it happen.
Alright, um, any, any other discussion? Okay, if not, then, um, I guess we need a motion for approval of the bills?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion to approve the pay the bills as presented, moved by Councilor Schneider and seconded by Councilor Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
And Councilor Steritz?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's. Motion carries.
And we need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I would make that motion. Second.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Councilor Stickley and seconded by Councilor Fry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.